I got a thumbs up. Donna, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, it was just very quiet for one second. All right, so we might as well get started because it's 6:30, calling the meeting to order at 6:30. Forgive me for staring down at my desk, I'm just trying to follow along with the agenda. So, yep, so I want to just do a roll call. I'm going across the tiles on the top of the, my display. I have myself and Joyce, Donna, Melissa Truniski, Leslie Ferris. If somebody connecting to audio. Have Lynn. And I think I have Lynn, you're probably in on your phone too. I have two Linds.
Lynn Harrington is one.
Ah, thank you Lynn, and then I have Darlene Brady. If you can just come off mute when I call your name, so I can just make sure that we have who we think we have.
You do have Darlene Brady.
Thank you ma'am, and then I have a 3546495 phone number. That just went on mute, they were off mute a second ago. Oh, thank you. So that 3546495. And I can't call the meeting to order, thank you Joyce, because we don't have a quorum yet. So we'll. Hang on, I see Barbara now, you're on, and still just waiting to see who that 354 number is.
Can you hear me though?
Yes. You're a little ethereal with your virtual background, but that's okay.
I can't, I don't know what I did to it, I thought I was being clever and I screwed it up.
Sometimes there are a little persnickety. I think that 6495 is Debbie.
Yes, oh. Debbie DeVoe.
Oh, thank you. And then we have Ed, are you with us? Ed, can you hear us? And I think, um, I thought I just, there's Christopher. Yeah, Rick, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Okay, Chris, can you hear us okay? Ed, can you hear us okay?
Yep.
Terrific, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:34.
Can you hear me?
Yes, twice. But that's okay. And then we have, just going through a quick roll call, we have somebody called Owner, when you're waiting for their owner to connect. There's somebody on called Owner. So while that person gets on the call, we have a couple more people. Um, if everybody can just mute their, their Zoom to start, so that folks don't get feedback. Ed, if you can mute, that would be great. I think I can mute everybody, oh, I can mute everybody. Okay, so we're just gonna get started. The first item is to approve the minutes. And Ed and Chris, do you have any problems, um, approving the bolus of minutes, the five sets of minutes that were included in the agenda? March 4th. March 10th special. March 10th, March 10th regular, March 16th special, March 30th special. So, do you got, do you want to go through them one at a time, or are you good to do them all at once?
I'm good to do them all at once.
Chris? Okay, Ed, is that in the form, in form of a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes.
Fantastic, I'll second that. Any discussion?
No.
Motion to approve, I'm gonna do this in the roll call way. I, I say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Ed says aye, fantastic. Next is public communication, I don't have, we, I don't have anything. Is there a member of the public that has any comment or anything to offer up that they'd like to say? Okay, we're gonna move on. Report of the first selectmen. So as we all know, a lot of what's been going on has to do with COVID-19. Just gonna go over a brief list and we can get this, I'll get this report out through Joyce. We appointed a new emergency management director, David Becker, I believe he's on the call. And also appointed a new deputy emergency management director, Eric Epstein. And I'd just like to thank them both for stepping up and committing to this, these positions. It's very much appreciated, it takes a lot off my plate as far as the nitty gritty of this emergency. They've created an emergency management team and they're doing three times a week briefings. We just had one this morning, we do Tuesdays and Thursdays, and then we have an extended one on Saturday mornings for more detailed discussion of issues and ongoing EOC tasks and missions. We've also assigned a CERT team leader, Bonnie Donzella has offered to do that, and she's been doing a great job getting the 20 plus people who have responded to the outreach engaged. And I think about half of them are through their CERT training. And there's just a couple more minor, minor details in order for them to start doing missions that involve going out in the community and doing volunteer work, they are working on a couple of tasks right now. One is an outreach to our vulnerable population in town, Bonnie's again spearheading that. It's gonna be, they're sending out information and just an outreach to those folks that Social Services has identified as part of our vulnerable population. But she's got a lot of stuff sort of in the hopper, but that's pretty exciting. So other things, participating in regular, very frequent conference calls with the governor, their team, the economic, the Department of Economic Development at the state level, the regional, DMS folks have been fantastic. They're having, they do a weekly call, the regional coordinator, John Field, with emergency management director, the EM teams, CEOs, and is a wealth of information, just stellar. We're also working with Northwest Hill COGS as one of the, one of three pilot towns that were chosen for this food share program. So it's gonna be a drive-through food share where they're using the Northwest Food Hub to provide sort of boxes of fresh vegetables and other items that are coming out of the gardens. And also, I think they're gonna do a bread or something. And we already, we got confirmation back from Jocelyn from the COG that in 24 hours, we had the most signups of all three towns. We had 78 people sign up for the program in literally less than 24 hours, she said. Sending out another ask in the next newsletter, which is gonna go out in the next 24 hours. And I'm sure we'll have plenty more, so that's gonna be a, something that we have to logistically figure out, which will work with the emergency management team to do some sort of drive-through, probably somewhere near Town Hall, where people will just come and pick up their shares, it's a small fee. And so that dovetails into the food bank, which Leah sent me a quick wrap-up for the last few weeks. They're continuing to operate the food bank with a drive-through no-contact pickup protocol. And they do a nine, they're doing a no-contact delivery to nine households. The bags are at this point are all pre-packed, so there's not any shopping or contact going on. The food bank is currently providing for 41 households. Prior to the emergency, it was 27 households, so that's a big, big increase. And I anticipate that, that's probably gonna go up. Without, without any more food donations, we currently have enough food for two, possibly three weeks. Food donations have been fairly steady, and she foresees some resources for food purchases. Finally beginning to open up, the Connecticut Food Bank was very, very depleted for a number of weeks, like one or two items, so that's been a challenge for her. The amount of food given weekly to each household is about a half of what the food bank provided in the past. To offset this, they're giving voucher gift cards for Davis IGA for $50 for, $50 to $75, depending on the household size. And those have been provided weekly. And she would, she says here, I would like to return to only providing food, but all this depends on being able to purchase larger amounts by the case. The cost of the gift cards will be difficult to maintain for many more weeks. Please be aware that the food bank, though an immediate issue, is only one part of the changes to the economic landscape. And this is directly from Leah, I'm anticipating a heavy impact and need for social services, financial assistance, and linkage to resources going forward. I've seen many Kent residents stepping up and making donations through the Town Hall and Kent Community Fund, can continues to stand up and help their fellow residents when the need presents itself. So that's directly from Leah. Sorry, I'm going back to my report here. We're continuing to work with KERMA on a number of policies that we need to put in place for remote working, social media use, and acceptable use policies with the governor's recent executive orders. We're, we just want to make sure that we're complying with those. Town Hall, we continue increased cleaning of all the buildings that are in use. Emergency executive order compliance with employees. And check again and really trying to stagger the in-Town Hall work hours of folks so that it follows the CDC guidance, follows the OPM guidance that they've given out to really have one person, one office kind of thing. We're wearing masks whenever possible, whenever we're interacting with each other, and obviously sticking to all the distancing. Fielding a lot of phone calls, emails from residents on a lot of different concerns, everything from, I saw a group of folks on their motorcycles, and how come they're not getting arrested for all being together and being pulled over on the side of the road, to Andrew is doing triple duty on making sure that those recreation areas that we closed are truly, they stay closed. A lot of words, a lot of offers from, of help from folks across in the town and beyond. And words of support from a lot of people of the efforts by everybody in town government, from the transfer station workers to road crew to folks in Town Hall, it's, it's very much appreciated. So that's, those are the sort of bigger buckets of the, of what we're doing as far as COVID. I don't wanna, we have a big agenda, so I'm just gonna sort of keep forging through my report. And then we'll continue to move on, budget. Again, there's a number of people here in the building, Barbara, Joyce, Darlene, Debbie DeVoe have all been great. Donna has been fantastic, helping me through my first budget season. So I very much appreciate what they've been providing. And, um, so just to continue on, because there, a lot of this is gonna dovetail into what's on the agenda, and I don't want to have to keep going back and forth, so we're gonna, we're gonna just keep moving forward. For the report of the selectmen, Chris, Ed, do you all have anything that you want to report on?
I'm good right now. Oh, go ahead.
I don't have anything to report on, I have a question with respect to, which I don't see on the agenda, is the trooper presence. Understandably that he, he or whomever is covering are running up and down in the places that are of concern where people are gathering, but the speed on, on the wide-open now car-free Route 7 is out of control. I've heard from a couple of merchants who are still around, who don't feel it's safe when people are coming by their, their actual establishments, pulling over, getting out of cars, sometimes with children. And so I'm wondering if indeed, has been any trooper activity, or I'm sure you guys have heard that as well. And, and can you, can you elaborate on whether anything's being done on that, Jean?
Yeah, so Andrew, every morning that Andrew's in, and actually pretty much seven days a week, he's briefing me on his, you know, daily tasks and happenings. And he's doing, he or the patrol trooper are doing speed enforcement pretty much every day. He, he was here this morning and was going directly out to, to do some speed enforcement. There's, you know, with the social distancing, there's a, you know, a change in how they're interacting. They can't chase car, you know, they're not allowed to chase cars anymore. So it's, it's more deterrent, but he's, his average today, he reported from yesterday, the average through town was 34 miles per hour. It's, I mean, he's, he's focusing on it every day. And I just got a, had a couple emails back and forth with the, oh, I forget what his title is, but he is a higher up for the Appalachian Trail, and that's another thing that's bringing people from out of town to come into town, they're likely gonna close the AT. They haven't officially announced it yet, but I had a draft letter from them today, so that's gonna help. Not only with people not coming from out of town, but it's also gonna help with another place that he doesn't have to go to as often.
Right.
Deep has Rangers still on duty at Kent Falls, so that's gonna help.
Seen that, yeah.
But we're, you know, we're swimming uphill, upstream rather, against, you know, against a tide, which is the nice weather coming. So I don't know if it's, you know, I know the resources are strapped at CSP, but I can make a, you know, a phone call to see if there's anything that the troop can do to, you know, offer us up.
I think just sitting on the road is, is sufficient enough. I noticed on, on Sunday, the motorcycles were going by very slowly, so I think is probably, I'm just guessing, because I didn't go off campus, but I'm just guessing that a trooper must have been sitting out there, just, just eyeballing them.
Yeah.
Rick, is, is this a time that we can get those speed signs changed and put out, possibly?
Oh yeah, we'll do, get the permits and put them out.
So that involves getting an encroachment permit from the DOT, Chris, just so you know.
I get it.
We passed that permit two weeks ago.
That permit two years ago, so I'm well aware of it, I just think that this is an opportunity, when nobody's out in the road, to be able to go and get that permit quickly and put those things up. They're just useless sitting in our garage or wherever they're doing, wherever they're sitting.
They're sitting there for, because there was a different plan that was gonna get put in place before this happened.
I get it. So I don't have anything else in terms of questions with respect to my report.
Okay. You good, Ed?
Yeah, no, I'm good, Chris, I answered the question about the traffic through town, so that's good.
Um, report of the treasurer, Barbara, I have you as the host, so if you want to screen share, by all means.
Well, I'd probably wait to do that until we're doing budget stuff.
Okay.
Unless you want me to do that now.
Let's keep on the, in the order, just, just to keep.
Okay, I don't have my regular report, just because we're, it's been a little discombobulated as trying to get things into a normal stream of activity. I did attend FEMA webinar last week, and so now Kent is all set up with their grant portal. In order to get FEMA reimbursements, we have to file quarterly. And we can recoup costs for equipment, materials, and personnel. So we're gonna start compiling those costs and hopefully start filling out a submission. And soon as the quarter's over, we'll have it ready to go. I'm holding down my office by myself, I have no clerk, yet the activity that rolls through my office is unchanged.
I'm sure.
Doing double duty.
Can you update me, what, what is this FEMA grant program that we're, we're looking at?
So it's not really a grant permit program, it's the reimbursement for this emergency.
For which emergency, this COVID emergency?
Yes.
And, and what, what falls under the classifications of qual, in qualifications for, for emergency reimbursement?
Well, it's, the federal government declared a national emergency. Our state government declared a state emergency, and our town government has declared a town emergency. So those three things qualify us to participate in the PA, which is the public, public something rather, through FEMA, so that we can get reimbursed for these costs that we're expending. For things like the subscription for this video conferencing, so that we can continue to have meetings.
Got it.
Clothing that people are buying, so that they can continue what their activities are, et cetera.
So if you were to guess a ballpark and no wild cards coming, it's, it's pretty minimal money, isn't, is that accurate?
I have no idea yet, I really won't know until we get the first quarter filed, because it's a 75% reimbursement, and we have to have a 25% of cost share on our own. But part of that cost share can be volunteer hours, it can be things that the ambulance is providing services. So there's a lot of moving parts to this disaster event.
Okay, thank you for that.
So moving along, we don't have any tax refunds, new, under new business. The first thing that we need to address is the executive order, section six, for the suspension and modification of tax deadlines and collection efforts. Do you guys have this in front of you, have you been able to review it?
I did look at it.
Yeah, I looked at it.
And I asked Debbie to provide a, her opinion.
Yep.
Which she did in an email. Um, oh shoot, I don't have that printed out, yes I do, a minute. So.
And what was, what, I was looking for that.
I'll, I'll read this to you, so she's addressing this as the tax collector, not as the, as sewer. Planning to send out the quarterly bills, oh, sorry. I think you should say no to the deferment program, the Board of Finance was firm at their last meeting that the bills should go out on July 1st. I know Patty, Jen, and Jim have been putting in long hours to make sure everything is in order for this to happen. Extending the payment out for 90 days is not necessary. The mill rate is not changing, so the taxes are not going up. This is a bill that happens every year, so most people budget for it through the year. Spreading the time over 90 days is unnecessary. Section six, executive order 7S, does say the town must choose at least one of the options of the subsections. I think section B, low interest rate program, would help those people who can't pay the whole bill during the month of July. The interest is reduced for 90 days, and the rate is 0.25% per month. The town is still being paid interest, but the taxpayer has a window of 90 days to pay at a reduced rate. Everyone seems to gain from this program. escrow accounts are not eligible for the reduced rate program, banks must pay on time. Quality data is working on a software update for this as we speak. The town clerk has been notified not to file the deed for the tax sale property held in October. The redemption period is extended until the governor declares the emergency is over. We will be sending out notice of intent to lien on May 1st, liens will be filed the first week in June. And that executive order excludes liens, liens are continuing on. And that's it, and thank you. So, I don't know if, if you have questions about what the difference is between the two. Like her email stated, we are required to choose at least one, we can choose both. There is some flexibility there, there's other flexibility. But basically, the OPM put out some, some further guidance, and it boils down to the deferment really just extends the grace period, so we have that 30-day, there's a 30-day grace period. It really extends that grace period to a 90-day. The, um, they do have to apply for, for eligibility, but that's a, an application that OPM has already published, so we don't have to create a form, which is a good thing. Just looking at what else, so then the low interest rate really boils down to, they would not have an extended grace period, but they would be paying significantly less interest if they pay late. So for semi-annual and annual towns, and this is right from OPM. The next installment comes due on July 1st, 2020. This plan covers installments that come due up through and including July 1st. For the July 1st installment, the last day to pay will still be August 3rd, 2020, because August 1st is a Saturday. But if the taxpayer pays on August 4th or later, they will not be paying the 1.5% per month interest, but rather only 0.25% per month interest. On August 4th, the interest charged would not be 3%, but rather 0.25 times two months, or 0.5%. This plan would remain in force for, only for 90 days from the due date of July 1st, it would end on October 2nd, 2020. So that's, those are the, the two, the two options.
Remind me again, Jean, I think it was last meeting you told us, the percentage of people in escrow, is that is not exempt?
Correct, I, I want to say it's a little over 30%, is that correct, Debbie?
Is Debbie on?
No, it's, can you, oh, it's probably closer to 20%.
No, it's, can you, it's probably closer to 20%.
20%, so we're around about 80% of them, okay.
I pulled, the COG did send us the current unemployment rates and numbers by town. Right now, we're for our, they do it by labor markets, and our labor market is 16 towns, and we split the list. We're exactly in the middle as far as the rate of unemployment. And so ours right now is at 3.8%. That's 4th February. The Connecticut rate is 4.4%, and the rate, the rate across the country is 3.8%. These numbers are, they're gonna change. And every other CEO that I've been talking to is very concerned about the unemployment rates. If you look at this, this was, you know, this February number of 57 people unemployed or apply, who have applied for unemployment in Kent is way before this really started to hit anybody. So from a timing standpoint, it wasn't until March 21st that the executive order came out for the hair salons, barber shops, nail salons, all two closed. And, I'm sorry, and the 16th was the first of the, I think, three different waves for restaurant bars and gyms. So this February number is, my thinking is that it's gonna explode come next month. So I'm really, really concerned about this. And also, we're not gonna, you know, it's all on a big lag, all these labor numbers. So I'm just worried by June, July, August that we're gonna be seeing very, very different numbers.
Well, look, the town's not gonna foreclose on anybody. So that, unless it goes out a number of years. I think the real issue is, we should be getting revenue and as much revenue as possible. So I would agree with Debbie in her assessment and her recommendation is to just, let's go forward. It seems to me the installment with the grace period of August 3rd makes a lot of sense. And, but I think we should expect everybody to, you know, pay what they can pay. There are going to be some people who will, won't be able to have a choice, but those people will come to us and, one way or another, to Debbie. And if it gets really ugly, you know, potentially with respect to, you'll talk to banks, you're talking landlords, you're talking, really deep concerns there, then that's gonna change the whole game anyway. And all the towns and the states, the feds will have to think about that differently. But I think in the short term, we expect, everybody should, shouldn't pay.
And the low interest is low interest.
That's low, that's low interest.
It's definitely, if you have a $4,900 tax bill, your interest per month on the .25 comes out to like $1.27 a month. So it's virtually nothing. It's just the fact that they are paying interest.
Right.
It's sort of, it's accountability.
And remind us, Debbie, what it would be if I didn't pay my taxes and I was late, what the penalty would be?
For that same $4,900, it came out to like $127 a month.
So that's the point, simply is, which Debbie is drawing on, is that, that as somebody who is not paying their taxes in the normal times, should be, should be hit with a penalty in these abnormal times where we're trying to make the pain, you know, as less as possible, so.
And this only is good for three months.
Yeah.
The whole program ends in three months. Either program ends in three months.
And technically, it's sort of two months because that grace period is there anyway, right, Debbie, that 30-day?
Well, no, if you, the grace period is only there if you pay during that grace period. If you go into the second month, then you pay for two months' interest.
Okay. So is there any thought to offering both options to people?
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. Hey.
I think you're gonna find there's a handful of people who can't do it, who can't pay. You know, it could be a bigger group, if indeed it gets deeper, but at that point, we'll just have to deal with it.
Ed, just looking for way in here.
Oh. It's in the bathroom.
Ed? Did you go to the bathroom? How can they hear? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. No, I must have hit back mute again. My question is, who's gonna keep track of all this percentages and all this other stuff for three months?
Me, my job.
Thanks, selecta.
So I say, Debbie, we send the bills out on time.
What?
I say we send the tax bills out as like we normally do them.
Well, that's not one of the, it's not really, do we send them out on time or not? Because tax bills will still go out regardless. Right, Debbie? I'm not, am I?
The bills, the bills will go out July 1st, yes.
Regardless, it's not really, we're not, it's not picking whether or not we send them out.
No, no, this executive order has nothing to do with that.
Right, right. And you said in the, oh, there it is, that Quality is working on a patch or an update to account and help you track all of this?
Yes, and if you agree to this, the way the executive order is set up, it will apply to the sewer bills which are going out April 1st. They fall in this time period. So I guess they're going to have this up and running pretty soon because April 1st, oh, May 1st, I'm sorry, May 1st is coming pretty fast. I'm sorry, May 1st, not April 1st, is coming pretty fast.
Okay, and they're, they have, they're confident they're gonna have that update in place to figure this, to get this all figured out, so that you don't have to sit there with a, you know, a bunch of sheets of paper and checks and doing it man.
No, 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 and, you know, interest is, I only have to worry about the interest 30 days for when the bills go out. So if you pay within the normal time, this whole discussion is moot.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry, Debbie, traditionally, what kind of percentage do you get in the first month?
We got a big percentage last year, but I'm not sure what the percentage will be this year.
But roughly, year over year, it's pretty consistent, isn't it?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Year over year, it's pretty consistent. I just, this is an inconsistent year.
Well, understandably, but I anticipate there are gonna be, most people that can handle it, they'll handle it. And then there'll be probably a tier that we're not used to that won't be able to, or they'll have to prioritize a little differently.
As I said in my email, yes, most people budget for this, and we're not raising it, so that's a big help.
Yep.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion pursuant to Executive Order 7S, Section 6, that the board adopt the low-interest rate program.
I'll second that.
Any discussion, Ed?
No.
Okay, voting, I, Jean.
I, Chris.
I.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a deadline of April 25th, but we'll get this, Debbie will work to get this out to OPM tomorrow so that, and we'll make sure that you have a copy and, so that you can get it to Quality so that they can continue on their path to getting this all set up. And it will also go in the newsletter. The next is to authorize the Board of Finance to adopt the budget and set the mill rate. So pursuant to Executive Order 7I, Section 13, which is a well-worn executive order in my book of executive orders, that talks about, have you guys had a chance to read that?
I breezed through that, so update me on that. I did see it. Just see here.
I'm familiar with it.
Oh, my goodness. So it authorizes the, it, the Board of Selectmen needs to authorize the Board of Finance to, what's the word I'm looking for?
Adopt the final budget.
Thank you. To adopt the final budget and set the mill rate. They have to hold a hearing, but in the executive order, the town meeting is suspended in the statute. So we have a timeline that we've built out, and we'll share that with the Board of Finance. I've had a couple of preliminary conversations with Mark Zabedic already about that. So it's, I think we're good to go. We really just need to make this motion so that we can, that they can, at their next meeting, which is on the 21st, plan for the town hearing. So the plan is to open up a comment period for the public for a certain amount of time. We're gonna have, we've created an email address where they're gonna be able to submit comments to. Then the comment period will close. Leslie will compile all the comments and questions. They'll go out to whoever it pertains to, Board of Ed, Board of Selectmen, you know, regarding the budget. Then those comments will have a deadline when they're due back to the Board of Finance. And then the Board of Finance would likely look to hold the hearing during.
It's in lieu of the hearing. It's still, it's just their regular meeting.
Right, so it would be during their regular May Board of Finance meeting on the 19th. So I'm gonna make a motion to authorize the Board of Finance to adopt the final budget and set the mill rate pursuant to Executive Order 7I, Section 13, in lieu of the annual budget meeting in accordance with the timeline set up by the Board of Selectmen. That was a little long. Give Joyce a second. Oh, and we're recording, so we're good.
I will second that.
So discussion? Ed?
No, I don't have any discussion on it.
Okay, we've spent a lot of time, we've talked to Randy Dibella about the process and the timelines and making sure. My big thing is to make sure that the public has adequate time. I know in the past, not a lot of people attend the town meeting and the town hearing, but this is, we're in like a new, new playbook here, and I think we have to be a little bit flexible and patient to allow people to comment and to be engaged in this process. That's completely new to all of us.
Well, help me here, but the Board of Finance's request that we hold the mill rate, and is that, that's accurate, right? I read that through the minutes. In effect, the taxpayer is, while the balance may be a little different, the taxation rate will be the same, so. So it is a little odd, but it's not as if we are significantly increasing or significantly reducing the budget in major ways that people, you know, would have a voice in.
Ed, any other questions or comments?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. All those in favor? Jean, I.
Chris, I.
I.
Thank you. Moving to old business, the KH Grant. We need to adopt a resolution. So I'm gonna make a motion to adopt this resolution that I will read. "The Resolution of Applicant Small Cities Program." "Whereas federal monies are available under the Connecticut Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program administered by the State of Connecticut Department of Housing pursuant to Public Law 93-383 as amended. And whereas pursuant to Chapter 127(c) and Part 6 of Chapter 130 of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Commissioner of Housing is authorized to disburse such federal monies to local municipalities. And whereas it is desirable in the public interest that the Town of Kent make application to the state for $800,000 in order to undertake a small cities community development program and to execute an assistance agreement, therefore, should one be offered. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Selectmen that it is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites for state assistance imposed by Part 6 of Chapter 130 of the Connecticut General Statutes, and that the filing of an application by the Town of Kent in an amount not to exceed $800,000 is hereby approved, and that the Board of Selectmen is hereby authorized to direct such, and directed to file such application with the Commissioner of the Department of Housing to provide such additional information to executive such other, to execute, sorry, such other documents as may be required by the Commissioner to execute an assistance agreement with the State of Connecticut for state financial assistance if such an agreement is offered, to execute any amendments, rescissions, and revisions thereto, and to act as the authorized representative of the Town of Kent." Can I have a second? For that motion?
I will second.
Chris has put his hand up. So this is another sort of procedural housekeeping for the grant, that we need to put this resolution in place. Any questions or comments? Chris, Ed, anyone?
Barbara?
Yeah?
Your review of this seems pretty much in line with what we've been talking about still.
Yes, and actually, I think just yesterday I got a project responsibility matrix from the grant administrator that I'd be happy to share with everybody. But to boil it down quickly, mostly what they're doing is preparing all the documents, and we're reviewing them and then authorizing them.
Okay.
There's not a lot that I have to actually create on my own.
That's good. I think we lost Ed.
For some reason.
That's nice music, isn't it?
Great, sounds good.
So calling the vote, Jean, I. Awesome. Thanks, Ed.
I.
Next is the five-year capital plan. I'm gonna turn this over to Joyce. She's gonna do a screen, I mean Barbara, sorry, she's gonna do a screen share so we can walk through this. The Board of Finance asked the Board of Selectmen to cut the capital plan, keeping it at $1.1 million. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Barbara.
Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay. So they voted, as Jean said, to make the fiscal year '25 total be $1,100,000. So they voted, as Gene said, to make the fiscal year 25 total be $1,100,000. And so in discussions, we had to take out $366,235 to do that. So in discussion with Rick, it was decided that we would take two of his projects that were in that year and divide that three sixty-six to thirty-five by two and reduce each project by half of that amount and move the other half of that project over the line into 26. Additionally, we took these bridges, Bridges Five and Bridge Seventeen and split them each in half and moved them each out another year as well to try and mitigate the future bottom line. So hopefully we won't run into this in the future. That accomplished what the task was that the Board of Finance gave you to do and Rick was okay with it. So I guess you guys just have to vote on it, right?
I think that makes sense to me.
Me too. And I, I have a, you know, a recurring concern about if Barbara, if you can scroll down to that bottom line. That the Board of Finance wants us to really hold at that, you know, million, million, one line. And I just worry that we're, we keep kicking cans down the road and we're going to, I just don't want to have us paint ourselves into a corner on, on any of this.
Right. Because it was pointed out that the volunteer department doesn't have anything in this fiscal year 25. But I'm sure they'll get it together and have stuff for next year. So that's going to send 26 and 27 flying over, I'm sure.
Well, I say this again, it's, while I understand having been very much invested in this, this document over the last number of years, the fear that we, we had over the number of years that it would grow has grown and it's grown, not because people want more, it's because things are expensive. And we have done a good job at consolidating and taxing in a manner such that it softens the blow. But the bottom line is things are expensive. I make a motion to accept the capital plan as amended.
How's that? Is that better? Now can you hear me?
Yeah.
I was trying to second it. I had.
Oh, we lost you. So we'll vote.
Service down here. I just got out of work. So.
Okay.
You know, I don't have any discuss, just push it on the answers looking for.
Is that number for the years coming ahead or? I mean fixing it the way we're fixing it really isn't kind of. It is for this year without knowing exactly what they're looking for. It kind of puts us in a hard spot too.
Can you say that again? Ed, a little bit louder.
Yeah.
We're fixing it for this year by moving things out into the following year. And is that what they want or are they worried about this?
They, they wanted, they gave us, they made a motion to ask us to come back and, and keep it at 1.1 million. Not really, there wasn't really a discussion about the years to the right side of the black.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying. I agree with you on that. And I saw their motion and everything, but that's, you know, it's kind of, if they told us that in the beginning of all this, we could have worked on it and had it that way.
Yeah, you're right. So we'll vote. Oh, go ahead, Chris. Sorry.
I just want to move this along.
Yep. Gene, I.
I.
Yeah.
Thanks. We'll move on.
Thank you, Barbara.
Move on to the budget. So they made a motion and Barbara, you know, feel free to chime in. They removed the scatter code, the 150,000 for the scatter cook. Out.
And so the, the theory behind that, as I understood, is if indeed we need it, we'll come to a town vote.
Right.
Have they indicated where they would get that money?
No.
Not directly.
So they just saying that we can't afford it now, but we'll be able to afford it in the future. And at that point, Barbara, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if indeed the town says, hey, we need $150,000, let's just say in September. And we vote to fund that, they are most likely going to pull it out of the reserves, correct?
That's technically the only place it can come from. There won't be anywhere within the budget to do a budget transfer of that size at that point.
Yeah. So while I understand what they're doing, I think, you know, I don't know. I don't know if it's, it's the most, most prudent way because it's a little bit cheaper to do it this way, I think. But that said, they actually removed it from, from the budget?
They did. They made a motion and.
All right. I got it. I got it. I got it. So, so that said, they've, they've done that, removed that. All right. Well, and, and so I'm sorry, Gene, go on. I'm just sort of rambling thinking.
No, that's okay. That was it. So I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve the document as amended.
Wait, hang on a second.
150.
I'm sorry. They, they pulled that out of, of.
The operating budget.
Yeah, but whereabouts?
Line. 570, last page of the operating budget.
It had its own line and it was actually the transfer. It's just like a transfer capital.
Gotcha. Transfer to capital. Okay. So, so that comes out, but what was their request besides that? I thought I read that they wanted us to pull out $300,000.
No. What they decided to do was plug in the balance to balance the budget out of the undesignated fund. And you can see on the screen.
That's the 183?
That's the 794.
794, but the difference, okay. So they're plugging that in based on revenues coming into the general fund?
No, they're plugging that in out of the undesignated general fund to balance the budget.
Got it.
Hold the mill rate.
Right. But didn't I see somewhere an anticipated revenue at the end of the year?
Well, I.
You did a spreadsheet on that.
I did. And I anticipate that there's going to be $514,000. You can see my screen over here that that's what's actually coming back into the general fund at the end of this year.
Yeah. So that's, so that's the estimated number coming in.
Right.
Okay. So, and the difference is $400,000 from last year? Yep, 410.
Appropriated 515. We're not going to use, yeah, but they, well, we're going to use a very tiny bit of it based on my projection.
Right. And so help me here. What, what will, if we do all of this, what will be our fund balance at that point?
It'll be 2,283,717.
Got it. And the recommended number would be 2,105,88. Right. Okay. So we're actually adding more. Boy, that must make Ed real happy. It does. Because he usually likes, he usually likes to spend that money.
Epstein.
Based on my estimates, it'll be.
Yeah, I know what he said.
183,129 above the recommended reserve available for appropriation.
Okay. And, and they still think that it's not appropriate to keep the 150 in for the scatter cooks?
Correct.
Even though we're going to have an 183 to the good.
Well, but they also denied the Board of Education their request to do a budget transfer of 100 and up to $140,000 out of their budget surplus for this year.
Yeah.
Complete the funding for their entryway security project. So during their meeting last night, they assured the Board of Ed that when the Board of Ed is ready and wants to come back to the Board of Finance, the Board of Finance will make sure that that project gets funded.
And what was the tune? What was the expense on that, Barb?
The amount that they were trying to get taken out of the surplus of this year was in the neighborhood of $140,000.
So come July 1st, we will have 2.283717 in the bank.
Right. Well, based on my estimates, yes.
Based on your estimates. Yeah. I'm, we're assuming we're, we're in the third, fourth quarter now coming into it. So. Well, I guess with concern of revenues on it from a tax basis, maybe it is prudent to do it that way. Do you have any thoughts on that, Barbara?
I'm not pleased with the amount that they've appropriated to balance the budget.
Yeah.
I think from a governance perspective, trying to keep the mill rate flat for this many years in a row isn't wise.
Yeah.
But they did it.
And just to, just to expound on what you're saying. This would be the fourth year in which we have 18.61.
That's right.
And if you go back historically, which I'm looking at an old sheet here. If you go back historically, even to 2011, it has changed almost every year except for 2012, 13. So I, I would, I would agree with Barbara to the, to the point that, you know, if you falsely fund, if you will, if it's not falsely funding, but if you, you're basically not showing that we're growing, even though we have taxed, this is tax money we're using from, from years past. It's, it's to me not as, not as, not as straightforward. And I, I think the, the transfer is quite large and it's probably unprecedented, isn't it, Barbara? Have you ever seen it this large?
Yes, in my time, I have.
Never seen it this large.
No.
Okay. And Gene, did they give you a sense as to the philosophy as to why this makes sense? Or is it just that they're hard and fast trying to stay to the 18.61?
They want to stay to the flat mill rate, which I'm also concerned about just from the historical perspective. I know that like this coming year is going to be, it's a new playbook that's being written. So I appreciate that. I just worry keeping it flat for so many years. And I also worry about the sort of reverse engineering of budget based on a mill rate. And I'm new, so it seems strange and I probably just need to understand it better. But it just seems a strange way to like back into the budget with, based on a mill rate. Versus best governance, best practices, everybody sharpening their pencil to do the right thing for the government in order to run it.
Well, the concern is that going forward, at some point, if they don't have enough surplus to offset the rate, they're either going to, they have two choices. A, to cut us, ask us to cut pretty deeply, or B, the mill rate jumps significantly. In looking at our budget, it's clear to me that what Barbara highlighted, if you just, if you say, we're not going to go after the slight salary changes that we've made and even the slight percentage of contribution on the pensions. There's not much to cut.
I agree with that. There isn't much to cut.
Right. And so. They're cutting services and that's a whole other different conversation.
And even if you do, let's just make up, we, we take one department, we wipe it out and say, we don't need, you know, whatever department, it's still not going to make a significant difference.
Right.
So I don't, I don't understand nor, nor agree really with the philosophy of keeping it at, at this level. But, you know, that's, that's sort of the way it is. I don't, I don't, it would be really nice to understand their, their mindset and keeping it, and keeping it level. But I don't know if we're going to get that, not in these times.
And I agree on that point. With these times, I don't mind it being held level. And in years past, I also didn't agree with when the surplus started getting too high, the town would go out and purchase something to offset that too. So rather than keep the mill rate at a steady level. So I think for this year especially, it, it looks good holding it and letting the taxpayers know that we're worried about how much they're spending on their taxes too.
Yeah.
And our debt service will go away next year, correct? At 393? Barbara, isn't that?
Uh, hold on.
That's 2021. Aren't we done there?
Yes. Yes. 63021. Yeah.
Okay. So we'll have a $400,000 to the good next year. But then again, you, you run into timeframes. So, all right. Well.
I think this is good conversation for heading into the next year.
Yeah, I would recommend that the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance meet at some point in a neutral time component, like in September, to really talk about long-term planning and, you know, where we want to do with the capital plan, what we want to do with, you know, the entities like the grants and such like that and their expectations. And I think it'd just be a productive meeting to see, you know, where and what and how we, we move forward.
Yeah. Yep.
I, I agree. I said that during my campaign that it was kind of crazy for a Board of Selectmen to put a budget together and then have it sent to the Board of Finance and have it turned back to us because they wanted cuts. And it's like, I always said, why didn't they come to us beforehand before we started all this and ask, give us some ideas of what they were looking at?
Yeah. I think that's a great way to look at it. And just a generally more, I feel like it's this process, and again, I'm the new guy. But I feel like this whole process is very compartmentalized and I don't, doesn't need to be compartmentalized. And the, because this is how we've always done it. My least favorite saying. I really want to start to sort of bust away at that whole concept in town government. So I completely agree. So did we make a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the budget document as amended with the date of 4/14/2020 2:54 PM. Do I have that correct, Barbara?
Yes.
14 time.
Oh, because you have military time on your.
No, I emailed them. So they have one that says 3:14 PM, but it's the same document.
Okay.
It's because it got emailed.
You can just reference total budget, 13,548,527.
Thank you. A second.
I'll second that. Go ahead, Ed.
Any further discussion?
That's fine. I'll second it.
Great. Good on any further discussion, Ed?
No.
Okay. And voting I for Gene?
I for Chris.
Nope.
Was that an I, Ed?
Did you hear me?
No.
Yes. I.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara.
Moving on to cell tower. So the cell tower is in the process with the Connecticut Siting Council's hands. At this point, there's been a bunch of documents that have been posted to the Siting Council website. The, one of the most recent was an application for a protective protection order. The, one of the most recent was an application for a protective protection order to suppress the lease agreement details between the lessy and lessor. And I didn't see anything, any result of that, but all that's on the Connecticut Siting Council. I sent Dan Casa Grande an email. Let me see if I got anything back from him. Ah, ma ma ma, sorry. No, but if I get anything, I will obviously share it out. So that's pretty much it. The Bald Hill Neighbors, that's sort of the name of their group. They are, they have, I can't remember if it's party status or intervenor status, but it's it's just moving along at its, you know, sort of glacial pace, but it's continuing to move along. Streetscape, they have.
Can I back up for a second, please? We, I believe we said we were going to take an intervener position. Is that accurate?
We have a, we have party status. It wasn't intervenor, it was party, which is just a little, it's seat at the table versus.
So we also had a special meeting in which we met with council.
Yep.
And based on that special meeting, we were going to hear back from them.
Yep.
And I'm sorry?
Haven't heard back yet. That's what I was just checking for.
All right, that that would be good. If you could bug them to make sure that, you know, at least we're up to speed, because during these quiet times, things can move quietly and and yet quickly, even though, you know, they're doing business.
Yep.
So I think we should find out whether we can be doing business on this as well.
Yep. Streetscape, so we assigned Streetscape members. I did not, how should we do this? We.
You need to add Jack if you want to. You have to change that.
So Jack Nelson had sent us a late interest after the the meeting that we had assigning the committee, so I I'm going to make a motion to add him to the committee membership.
So moved.
Any discussion or questions?
I'm not on that, no.
Can you hear me at all?
Just barely.
Yeah, all right. We actually had this, our first meeting, I think it was yesterday.
Right, I just wanted to get through the housekeeping of appointing Jack Nelson for the second.
Good. Okay, good.
So we'll vote I, Jean?
I, Chris.
I, Ed.
Thanks. And so, yes, they had their first meeting yesterday, and it was via Zoom, and Rick, and I think Rick is still on, is Rick still on? And Ed, we're obviously at that meeting. You guys want to sort of fill in the gaps here?
Is Rick still there or not?
His iPad's there.
Oh. We really didn't, Mike Gobble is going to be our lead with the engineering firm, and he's going to really start getting, trying to get together with them, get plans on ASAP and get ahold of the state person. And I know the engineer has now been in contact with with them, so we should be, I think he said that plans might there.
Rick, can you come off?
Can you hear me now or not really?
Yeah, it's really coming in and out. Maybe Rick can help fill in the gaps.
I was out of the room. What was that?
Streetscape, Ed is sort of fading in and out. He has tentative internet access, so he keeps, if you can just give a quick update of what happened at the meeting yesterday.
Just form the committee, voted officers, Mike Dawes, chair, Jack Nelson, co-chair, and
Yes, me.
Vice chair, John Johnson, secretary. And we're just going to start having Mike give us updates when he can get ahold of DOT and get the plan to them and have them get out here so that we can get going on it.
Mike Dougherty?
Yes.
Okay, that's going to be fun, the two Mikes.
We're very quick.
Alrighty, thanks. Club Getaway, oh, sorry.
Is there any way we can just, because the months tend to slip by, and clearly there's a bigger issue on our on our dealing with the COVID. Is there any way we could get a bimonthly update as to where we are with each of these little committees and just so that we know what and where and how it's going? Because what's frustrating, and I know it's frustrating for many, is you get, here we are in April, and then we'll get to May, and it's like, well, the committee met, and we're still waiting for X, Y, and Z. And so I'd rather know that in two weeks and figure out maybe how to push X, Y, or Z.
So so you want to have the, so I'm not sure what your question is. Do you want them to have, to provide?
It's, it's, let me back up. It's challenging because nobody can go into town hall to find out what's going on without having a meeting like this or, you know, calls here and there. So I guess what I was seeking is from these subcommittees, specifically the Streetscape, maybe even update on Towers and in the in the local things, is to see, you know, where the snags are and when and how they're going to be pushed. And and that's basically through an update. Does that make sense? My, my.
Um, yeah, I just, I'm not sure, like, the the vehicle, do you, aside from going and looking, reading the minutes and signing up for the alerts for.
As an example, the Subcommittee for the Streetscape could meet, and when they do meet, they, a synopsis gets put out to the town as to where we are.
Yeah, they they produce minutes that get posted to the website.
Okay. All right.
There was, may I talk?
Yeah.
There was discussion yesterday about whether they even have any meetings until the plan is produced.
Chris, can you hear me now or not?
Yep.
I was just going to say that we discussed that our Streetscape and everything will be set up to Darlene, and there will be minutes. So you'll be able to get those and read those all as as our minutes, as our meetings go.
But it does make sense not to not to really have, I mean, I don't know how you can have substantive meetings if you don't have plans.
Well, it sounded like we're going to have those pretty soon, though, so that's good. And Mike's on it big time, and he wants to meet with this, get the state personnel ASAP. We talked about having the group walk. We discussed about how the protocol would work with that with the public and all that. So it actually, it sounds like things are going to be moving along here, I would say, within the next week or so.
So, Chris, an idea, and I don't know if this speaks to what you're looking for, my, I hope, we'll create a Streetscape page, right, because there's going to be a lot of focus and a lot of interest in this. And as a timeline starts to get fleshed out, would you like to see like a timeline?
I think that'd be wonderful.
Okay, we can work on that.
I think that would be wonderful, and and not just for me, but for, I think, the general public, so that.
We're not doing it for you.
Oh, come on. And I want to know how we can get this all under FEMA.
Working on it.
Come on, Barbara.
Um, okay, is that it for Streetscape? Good to go?
Yep.
And I was thinking, I'm looking at you, and I'm, then I realize I'm looking at a picture of you. So Club Getaway is next, and that is, has to do with sewer, and that's sort of all in a holding pattern while we're dealing with this emergency, correct?
Correct.
Okay. KVFD Finance Review Committee, it's also sort of been in a holding pattern. I wish, I can reach out to to the fire chief and the president to talk about membership. And then we'll, we'll go from there and set a a meeting. Does that sound like a plan?
And I'm just a little confused, having.
Last month.
I'm a little confused, having been on that committee. What is the reason? Are we just sort of reviewing, updating, or is it just we're holding it over from last time?
Well, you had said at a me, a couple of meetings ago that you wanted it to continue on, and because there's been transition in leadership in the town hall and leadership in the fire department, that we need to sort of re re-figure out the the membership, what that will, what that's going to look like.
I did say that, and I guess the the part and parcel, where we are right now, we're not doing anything, right? We can't, I mean, no one's meeting, no one's, no one's, and it doesn't seem to me that there's a problem, at least with the, on their finance side. Maybe there is, but nothing that they've come to us on.
Well, I know that there's been a couple of conversations about their capital plan and how they're going to fund their capital plan, and I know I've had conversations with Carly about how truly how they get the, how they figure out, like, what's the right amount to move out of their reserves for this capital plan. So I think that it makes sense to at least have a sort of, what's the word I'm looking for? Defibrillation of the committee, just to see where everybody is and see if the fire department wants, needs to to have our input and and collaboration.
Okay.
So we'll contact.
I'll stand by.
Okay. The policy and procedure manual is, you know, just a work in progress. Joyce and I are, like I said, working with Kirmak on a couple of policies that have to do specifically with the emergency, but again, a work in progress. And that is all I have.
Good, because I'm running out. I don't know why.
So I'm gonna.
There it is.
I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 7:52, and thanks, everybody, for being patient with our technology, and stay safe and stay home. Wear your mask. Thank you so much.
Thank you.